On behalf of Lynchburg City Council, welcome to the public hearings of the fiscal year 2025 water rates and the fiscal year 2025 budget. As we gather here today, I want to extend a warm welcome to all of our citizens who have taken the time to join us. Your presence underscores the vitality of our community and the shared commitment we have towards its growth and well-being. This meeting represents a cornerstone of our democratic process, a platform where every voice, every concern, and every suggestion holds weight. It's a testament to the strength of our civic engagement and the belief that together we can shape a brighter future for our great city. I want to emphasize that tonight's meeting is primarily about listening. Your perspectives, your insights, and your experiences are invaluable to us as we navigate the decisions that will impact our community. Each opinion voiced here today contributes to the rich tapestry of ideas that inform our actions as a council. In the spirit of fostering constructive dialogue, I urge everyone to maintain a tone of respect and courtesy towards one another. We may hold differing viewpoints, but it's through civil discourse that we find common ground and forge pathways towards progress. So, let's approach this evening with open hearts and open minds, prepared to share our thoughts and ideas for the betterment of our community's future. Before we begin, I'd briefly like to remind our audience of the guidelines for speaking at tonight's public hearings. Speakers will be called upon in the order they signed up to speak. Please state your name and where you live before you begin. Each person can speak for up to three minutes. If you are representing a group, you have up to five minutes, but only one person can speak on behalf of the group. After everyone on the list has spoken, I'll invite anyone else who wants to speak but didn't sign up beforehand. Once everyone in attendance has been given an opportunity to speak, I'll ask our clerk of council to play into the record any voicemails previously left by citizens unable to make it in person tonight. The first item on tonight's agenda is the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 water rate. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which they signed up to speak. I'll ask our clerk of council to read from our list of names.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One housekeeping item really quick. We will read three names. The first, if you can make your way to the podium for the first speaker, and then you'll notice on this side of the podium, we have two black lines of tape. If you could just line up Speaker Two and Speaker Three to ensure that we get through this quickly. With that being said, we only have one speaker for the water rates. It is Roman Grohowski.
Madam Clerk, prior to beginning actually, can we go ahead and do a prayer and the pledge of allegiance? Vice Mayor Feraldi, would you go ahead and lead us in that, please?
Sure.
If you'll take a brief moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in a quick word of prayer. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to serve this city and this community. I pray for wisdom, for the attentive ear, and a mind that is of your people. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
My name's Roman Grohowski. I'm a Lynchburg citizen. I have properties up in Diamond Hill. I just wanted to say that I had noticed that one of the sewer inlets at the community market fountain had been popping tires and tearing off front bumpers because it stands proud. I've only, I don't go there maybe once or twice a week, so if I've seen that sample size, it must be more of a problem. I let Public Works know, and it got no attention. But I wanted to just thank these gentlemen for engaging because I spoke with them, and they have hopefully more pull with the Public Works to fix the problem. But it is an issue. It's a sharp, proud corner, and it's costing people thousands of dollars probably a month, from what I've seen. That's all. Thank you.
That is the last, only one that we have.
Okay, that's all we have for water?
That's correct.
Okay, well then, the, and there's no voicemails from citizens?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, then, the public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2025 water rates is now closed. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Again, speakers will be recognized in the order in which they sign up to speak. I'll ask our clerk of council to read from our list of names.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First on our list is Megan Huffman, representing PTO Connect, followed by Phil Stump, and then Jennifer Long.
Good evening. My name is Megan Huffman, and I serve as a parent of a student of an RS Payne Elementary School student and a Bedford Hills Elementary School student. I've been serving in active parent roles across the city schools for about six years now in PTO roles, and I'm really proud of a group that we put together called PTO Connect that you might hear, have heard recently, raised about $40,000 for five of our local elementary schools through Read-a-thon programs. So, we highlighted literacy and also raised funds to supplement our budgets. PTOs also put on events like student arts showcases and events that help raise money, and I know I was just at one last Thursday with Councilman Miss Jones with our children, and we watched the violins play, and we bid on artwork, and I thank you for the art that you bid on, Councilman Miss Jones. It's so critical that we, as parents, are supporting our public schools and helping to supplement the funds that are needed. However, the reality that I've come to realize lately is that there really are not enough Read-a-thons or art showcase or butterfly artwork to ever make up for the gap that is left by this city council's tax reduction and budget cuts. There's really, we can't make enough butterfly art to fill the gap. You've cut us down to the bare bones with the tax rate, and at last look, over 49 critical FTE roles in instruction programs, operations, finance, HR, community relations, maintenance, facilities, and transportation are looking to be cut. Forty-nine FTE positions. We just can't stand any more, the system can't withhold any more cuts in the, in the human people. I work with a community relations team every day, and it just, we just, these are critical roles that are helping to supplement the loss of funding that is coming out of this chamber. Our community relations and individual is working on this wonderful PI program that you all are familiar with, the Partners in Education, that's helping get businesses to supplement the funding that we've lost. And without a person in that role, who is going to do that? It just doesn't make any sense to me. Professionally, I've been working on an LCS strings event happening this Saturday that I hope you'll attend. We're going to be celebrating 50 years of Mrs. Paris playing and teaching violin in our city schools. Fifty years of commitment. We have 30 LCS strings alumni coming back from all over the country to perform in different orchestras, and we have 500 people in attendance. This is the kind of thing we should be talking about as a city. Let's celebrate the wonderful history that we have with our strings. And as I, as I interview, I've been interviewing about 100 different alumni, they talk about an LCS system that they came from that is strong and robust and a city that supports them. They've gone on to amazing musical and professional accomplishments all over the globe, and that is what we need to be spending our time on, celebrating and supporting our students and our schools to the very best that they can be, not the demoralizing and adversarial space that we live in right now. It's, it's not productive, and it's, and it's nothing to be proud of. Our kids are amazing. They need our help, particularly after COVID. We're seeing record numbers of services and needs that these kids have, and we're looking at cutting critical positions that are helping these children to get shoes on their feet, clean clothes on their back, get to school on time. We're looking at cutting more transportation. I can't get my kids, I cannot get my kids to school in a school bus. I can't tell you how many times I wait by the curb and it never comes, and we're looking at cutting money out of the transportation budget. So, I would just ask that we kind of zoom out as a city and really look at, is this the city that we want to be? Or could we possibly rally together and this council and our school board work for us and not against us? Because it just sure feels right now that we're, we're just, you're just not for us. So, thank you.
Next is Phil Stump, followed by Jennifer Long, then Cynthia Capps, representing Sandusky Elementary School.
Good evening. Tonight, I want to start with a quote from Reverend William Barber. "A budget is a moral document, or an immoral one. I believe that it is immoral to starve our city's schools because it mortgages our city's Last Tuesday, I observed that our neighboring cities of Roanoke and Harrisonburg spent more than 30% of their city budget on their schools last year, while Lynchburg spent only about 17% of its budget on Lynchburg City Schools. To give money to public schools is not just, quote, "throwing money at them," unquote, as Mr. Helgerson would have you believe. Our outstanding superintendent, Dr. Edwards, a national leader in education, has worked wonders with the money you've given her, but she's had to do so with one hand tied behind her back. And she has told you each year that what you are doing is unsustainable. The budget you are proposing won't even keep pace with inflation. And as I reminded you last week, because you are not supporting Lynchburg schools to the extent our tax base would allow, you would not qualify for less, you qualify also for less state funding, a double whammy. And now you are seeing the results. Flourishing elementary schools like Sandusky and TC Miller, and flourishing programs like the Virtual Academy are threatened with closure, leaving parents uncertain about their children's future and teachers uncertain about their jobs. We have heard these parents and teachers address the school board passionately and eloquently. Teachers I have talked with are seeking jobs elsewhere. Parents are unbelievably frustrated. If you wanted to kill public education in Lynchburg, you could hardly think of a more effective way of doing so. Last week, I reminded you of why public education is so important, of how it has made possible careers for women that would have hardly been dreamed of 100 years ago, how it teaches our children to get along with people who are different, and to learn that differences are beautiful, and that together we are all stronger. It is the foundation of our democracy. I am not trying to judge or blame, Mr. Helgerson. I'm talking to you. Are you listening? I want to remind you of your accountability. You are our elected representatives. The future of our city is in your hands, and public education is essential to that future. Our children are our future. Please do not be like the man who said, "Mistakes were made, but not by me." I'm sorry, just one more word. The buck stops here. I implore you to responsibly support our city's schools by strongly increasing the proportion of the budget designated for our schools next year.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Next, we have Jennifer Long, followed by Cynthia Capps, then Michael Bremer.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Long, and I live on Pawnee Drive, and my son has been attending Lynchburg Virtual Academy, but Sandusky Elementary has been his base school. He attended SES from kindergarten to second grade, and as we all know, sadly, LVA has been closed for next year. This was heartbreaking, and our son and I did try to fight for LVA and spoke to the school board and wrote emails and did all that we could. Now we speak in support of SES. He actually would be here, but he is at karate right now, so. Our son has flourished while attending a school where he can have a quiet environment. He's able to take tests without distraction, and he has done well on his SOLs. And I guarantee you, these things would not be happening if he was still going to be in an elementary school and placed in an overcrowded classroom next year. He would have fallen behind because his anxiety would be through the roof. He would have, excuse me, he has high-functioning autism, and I guarantee you, he would fall behind in confidence, in social anxieties, and grades, and all of those important things. There are many students who are in the same boat as our son. And what about the students who are currently in the schools who suddenly will have overcrowding in their schools? This isn't fair to them either. This affects every student in LCS, not just Sandusky and TC Miller. This affects everyone. There are parents that I have spoken with who are also looking to leave the LCS community because of the closing of LVA, because they know that their child cannot handle the mainstream environment, especially the increased crowded classrooms, which, that breaks my heart because I'm actually one of those parents, and I wish I could decide differently. But because of the amount of anxiety our son will have, unfortunately, we have to make those changes. This cannot happen to other children. Our children cannot be valued by a dollar amount. They're worth far more than just an amount on a piece of paper. Our students cannot be put in a position where they will fall behind and not get the highest quality of education that they deserve. In fact, closing these schools would accomplish the exact opposite. Teachers and staff do not deserve to be put into this position as well. In our house, we still say Mr. Womack's SES motto, "We do it better when we do it together." And I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Next is Cynthia Capps, representing Sandusky Elementary School, followed by Michael Bremer, and then Derek Womack.
Good evening. The Sandusky and TC Miller communities came to you a month ago and asked you to dig deep into what was going on with our schools. And to those of you who have done so, we would like to say thank you. If Sandusky Elementary School is closed at the end of this school year, a majority of our students will have no place to go. Our surrounding schools, which are Perrymont, Heritage, and Sheffield, are almost at capacity. If our students fill the vacancies at these schools, 240 students will still be without a place to go. Nearly seven months ago, the decision was made to close Sandusky Elementary and TC Miller. That decision was made by the school board, and today, the school board still has no plan for our students. If these schools are closed at the end of this school year, it will be devastating for our students and our teachers. The remaining elementary, elementary schools around us will be overcrowded, as I've mentioned. Students will likely be moved multiple times to multiple schools in an attempt to alleviate this overcrowding. Quality of learning is once again being put on the back burner, leaving the achievement gap to widen even more. And it seems nearly impossible that all of our displaced administrators, teachers, and staff could be relocated within Lynchburg City Schools. Council members, we agree that you never should have been put in this position, just as Sandusky should have never been voted on to close because, when asked in the community, the community overwhelmingly chose for Sandusky to not be selected as one of the schools to be closed. You are the ones who can now save our students from having no school at all and from being thrown into a disaster by passing the budget increase of 3.2 million. Thank you so much for your time.
Next, we have Michael Bremer, followed by Derek Womack, then Rebecca May.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'm Michael Bremer. I'm a retired city school teacher residing in Ward Four. Well, y'all made a mess last year, and now it's beginning to seep through the ceiling, and you have to start cleaning it up. You botched the budget last year by ignoring the professional staff and voting to reduce the real tax rate below their recommendation. Now you have a mess. Your shortsightedness to make petty political points has jeopardized our city's well-being. My benefit from the reduced tax rate was a whopping $89. I would bet there are in this room right now people who would happily pay that $89 in tax to our city to have roads without bone-crunching potholes, to have a plan for Miller Park Pool, to have a renovated library, and to have our public schools enjoy the same 11% average increase other city departments are slated to enjoy. Instead, you're contemplating reducing our funding, and it is our funding of our public schools. This after slashing the LCS budget by more than 17% last year. This is shameful. Our schools cannot fix the roofs of your buildings or keep the lights on. Our school system is being forced to dislocate hundreds of families. The quality of public education is suffering. Overall general fund revenue is up by $12 million, so why? Even real property revenue is up 3.4% due to increased assessments. Yet, the proposed 25 budget is a reduction of nearly $50 million compared to last year's budget. You dishonor your stated priority that, quote, "The development and continued support of a strong public education school system is critical to Lynchburg's long-term success." Why do public schools have to suffer? Landlords of large housing complexes are the main beneficiaries of last year's reduction of 17%. Did they reduce rents by 17%? Or did they pocket the profit and perhaps make donations to the five council members who voted for the rate reduction? Last year, the budget cut into muscle. This year, it saws into the very bones of our public schools. More than 100% positions are in jeopardy. You are crippling the structure, the skeleton of public education in Lynchburg, but maybe that was your plan all along. Prove me wrong. Fund our public schools at $48 million that they need. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Derek Womack, followed by Rebecca May, and then Roman Grohowski.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and distinguished members of the Lynchburg City Council. Thank you all for this opportunity to stand before you. I also want to thank you for the work that you've already done for this wonderful city of Lynchburg. I've been in Lynchburg for about 35 years now, and I know that there have been tough decisions that have had to be made over the years as it relates to schools, as it relates to the city itself. And so, in September, October last year, we all know what took place with the voting for the schools to be closed. During that time, I spoke, and I made this statement, because it was $7.2, $9.2 million, and the question came up, is it worth the $9.2, $7.2? At that time, I made this statement, my children are worth much more than $7.2, $9.2 million. I can't put a price tag on my children, and I'm talking about my personal children and Sandusky Elementary students are my personal children as well. And so, I began to think, and I was at the meeting last couple of weeks, and the question came about, is it worth $3.2 million to continue to keep the school open for another year, Sandusky and TC Miller? And I was taken aback. I couldn't respond because, again, if I said in September, October, $3.2 or $7.2, $9.2, my children, I couldn't put a price tag, and of course, $3.2. I couldn't put a price tag on my children. We've done a great job of revitalizing downtown Lynchburg as we saw the things that needed to take place. Cobblestone has been placed, and it's wonderful, looks great, because we could see that those things needed to happen. However, when we look at our schools and we see the shape of some of our schools, we see that those things, and some things needed to happen in those schools as well. But you're able to see that by coming and seeing what's going on in those schools. Yes, our buildings need some help, but day after day, dedicated staff members come. Day after day, eager children continue to come. Day after day, supportive families come, and they continue to support. Why? Because they believe in what's going on inside those schools, our schools, TC Miller. And so, they're able to see that. So, I encourage you all to come and see what's going on inside those schools. Then you can make those decisions. Is it worth it? And I guarantee that you would say as well, it's worth more than $3.2, $5.2, $9.2. I can't put a price tag on those children. This is our city, from crack to crevice, from hill to hill, whether it's White Rock Hill or whether it's Bedford Hills. We've got a duty, responsibility, and I implore you, I support the budget that has been presented, and hopefully, we're able to support Sandusky Elementary, where we continue to do it better.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca May, followed by Roman Grohowski, then Erin Reed, representing EC Glass Department of English.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come today to share our hearts, which is our schools. The question, of course, the last few months seems to be, should the council invest money in Lynchburg City Schools? To me, this is a no-brainer. Of course, we need to invest in education. These children that are in the schools now are going to become community members in our city. The council has worked very hard already to bring businesses to our areas, to create jobs, and those jobs are bringing families to Lynchburg, which is wonderful. These families are wanting to send their children to reputable schools. They're looking for safe learning environments, small class sizes, certified teachers, equitable instruction. These are things that draw families in, and not just draw them in, but keep them here. LCS has to be fully funded so that we can compete for these students, but when the news is reporting that LCS is closing three schools, families begin to lose faith and question whether or not LCS is the right choice for their kids. And we need to remember, LCS is not the only option for many of these families. There's private schooling, homeschooling, and other public schools in surrounding counties they can send their children to. So, that research and that data that shows that those things are important is in place, but the plan hasn't changed. So, are we to ignore that research? Sandusky Elementary has an almost completely certified staff, experienced teachers, good-sized classrooms, great parent and family engagement. We are in a well-established neighborhood that is growing and changing. We create a welcoming environment for anyone who comes in the building to see those things, and of course, as Mr. Womack mentioned, always welcome to join us in our building, and we thank you for those who have. But the staff and families are appreciating the support that we keep hearing, that you're on our side, you're with us, you support us. But for the last seven months, we haven't seen any of those creative solutions. We haven't heard any new options. So, to say the least, the last seven months have been confusing, they've been frustrating, they've been stressful. Those words are all an understatement. We are fighting not for the division of Lynchburg City Schools. We are fighting for our schools, our buildings, our staff, our families, the children, the people who seem to have been left out of the conversation, even though it impacts them more than anyone else. So, of course, should LCS receive more funding? Absolutely. Do I understand some hesitations when these two sides seem to be fighting all the time? Of course. The problem is, the losers in this situation are unfortunately the families and the children who are not to blame for these things happening. So, of course, we encourage that funding to help our community to come. Thank you.
Next is Roman Grohowski, followed by Erin Reed, representing EC Glass Department of English, then Molly McLennan. of English, then Molly McLennan. I think Mr. Grahowski has just left, so Erin Reed, representing EC Glass Department of English, followed by Molly McLennan, and then Kathleen Davis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, to all the distinguished citizens here in Lynchburg City Hall. My name is Erin Reed. I live in the two-four-five-oh-three zip code. I am a teacher at EC Glass High School. I am a graduate of Lynchburg City Schools, and I would like to talk to you tonight about the budget that is before you. You know, last year, the VHSL named me the Speech Educator of Virginia for 2023. And there are a lot of things that I stand in front of you and I am proud of, not just the fact that I graduated from EC Glass, not just the fact that I graduated from Lynchburg City Schools. I teach a rhetoric and composition course at EC Glass. I teach public speaking as well. I am the Chair of the English Department. I am the co-coach of the award-winning forensics team. And last year, as I mentioned, the VHSL named me the Speech Educator of the Year. But the proudest thing I stand in front of you because of is that when I graduated EC Glass High School and I went off to college to get my teaching degree, there was never a moment in my life that I didn't think I was going to come back here and teach, because what Lynchburg represented to me and what EC Glass represented to me, through all of the teachers, through all of the administrators, through the custodians that I saw there, was an absolute passion for public education. And I am standing in front of you today, questioning your commitment to public education. Tonight, I come to talk to you about issues with the budget, and I'm going to boil this down the way that I best understand it. I watch a lot of school board meetings. I watch a lot of city council meetings. And as far as I can tell, here is the seminal argument against meeting the LCS budget request for this year. It boils down to this line, LCS, you have fewer students, so you get less money. That seems to be the argument. Well, first of all, in my rhetoric class, I'd ask you to write a second draft of that paper, because it needs a little bit better thought. You'd probably have to come in for a little bit of extra after-school activity to work on it as well. But here's the thing, that argument seems to be carrying weight with this council. So if that's the argument, let's take it up. I want to tell you a story from when I graduated EC Glass in nineteen ninety-four. I had a good friend of mine who used to have difficulty making good choices. He would get in a lot of trouble. And back in nineteen ninety-four, this was the era of zero tolerance. You would get referrals for wearing hats in the hallway. You would get suspensions for asking questions that people thought were defiant. And that's the thing, everything behavior-wise was handled through two ways, suspension and expulsion. And the reason I'm telling you that is because when you talk about Lynchburg City budgets and you say, hey, man, you've got fewer students, so shouldn't it cost less? I want to show you why that's faulty thinking. In nineteen ninety-four, my friend would have been given a referral, given a suspension, maybe expelled, depending on the behavior. But here's what we know today, twenty, thirty-some years later. Here's what you would tell me, Erin, if a kid cannot add, we want you to teach him. If a kid cannot spell, we want you to teach him. Ready? If a kid cannot behave... You know the rest of that sentence, right? And it's not to punish, is the thing. It's to teach, it's to educate. So why is this budget? Why do we ask the money that we do? It's because we're not here to send kids home, and we're not here to send them away back into the community. We're here to educate them, right? And that, will that cost money? That costs the money of support professionals, that costs the money of behavioral specialists, that costs the money of alternative education centers. That costs money. So if you're looking at budgets from the past and looking at budgets of the present, and you're going, wow, you're spending more per pupil. We are. But you should be happy about that. You should be proud of that. That should not be something that you look at the city schools and think is their fault. It's because we're educating kids how to read, how to do math, and how to behave in society. And we need money to do that. It just doesn't come free. I want to end with this. A number of years ago, a member of council equated the experience of an LCS student in public schools to that of getting a Big Mac at a fancy restaurant. That's a fun food analogy. I've got a better one. If you look at a room full of educators and you tell them that their funding is going to be continually restricted, what you're really saying is, let them eat cake. And you know how that ends.
Next, we have Molly McLennan, followed by Kathleen Davis, and then Leno Haley.
Good evening. I'm Molly McLennan from seven-twelve Riverside Drive. I moved here in nineteen sixty-five. Lynchburg is a much better place now than it was when we moved here. I have two asks of you, but first, I want to describe some changes that came about because Lynchburg citizens and city council worked together and supported them. When I arrived, there were no Blackwater Creek trails. There are abandoned railroad tracks. Walking on them was trespassing. Lynchburg City Council wanted to make a better city, and they voted to develop the trails. I wish I had time to list all the groups, individuals, businesses that worked also and supported them. In the late nineteen hundreds, Danny McCain highlighted incidents where it seemed that black citizens did not receive the same treatment as their white citizens. City council members voted to dedicate money and staff for a series of community dialogues. They were profoundly impactful. Small groups mixed in age, race, and income met eight to ten, twelve times with a curriculum. Then they could meet by interest group. The education interest group decided to form Beacon of Hope, which now supports Stay Close, Go Far. That came about from city councils devoting funds and staff to make a better city and citizens working with them. Today, a huge concern is our youth, our children, the violence done by them and the violence done to them, including what happens in our city schools. The founder of One Community, One Voice, has said, people, we've got to help our children believe that their life has value. Each child needs to believe my life has value and other people value it, and there will be a place for me in society. One Community Voice has a number of programs, including their Bike Award program for students who improve in citizenship, improve in attendance, and academic performance. Jubilee has increased its program. Peacemakers formed to try to address the violence on the streets. The Lynchburg City School Board administrators and staff have developed good programs also. I have heard administrators say that they want to take each struggling student and provide what is needed for that student to be successful. Oh, my word. I'm sorry. My two asks, support the city school, increase our tax.
Next is Kathleen Davis, followed by Leno Haley, and then Jennifer Wooster.
She left me hanging on a high five publicly.
Keep your applause like this, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Davis. I live in Ward Two. I'm not going to sit here and go through worst-case scenarios, because I did that last year on this night, and all of them came true, as you have heard tonight and over the last several months. We told you that this would hurt our schools. It hurt our schools. We told you this would put our neighbors' jobs on the chopping blocks. Our neighbors' jobs are on the chopping blocks. I could keep going, but I won't. Instead, I'm going to talk about when the four of you, Miss Jins, Hegelson, Feraldi, and Taylor, met behind closed doors and made the decision to go to eighty-nine cents. The only people that you took with you in that room were yourselves and apartment landlords and high-dollar real estate property owners who still raised the rent on Lynchburg's renters despite getting huge tax breaks that you promised them. I know my friend Jenna would gladly give back twenty dollars a month that you saved her for her child who was finally starting to love school again, just so that child could attend this virtual academy. You definitely didn't take LCS staff in that room with you, who, those LCS staff who were hired to bring back our students after a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, who are now facing losing their jobs. All four big-money donors to get even richer. Many landlords who don't even live in this state. Do we all know an Airbnb on our street who we've never met, the owner doesn't live here? I have plenty on mine. So you just didn't take the money away from our children, our schools, and our community. You took the money from the state and sent it elsewhere. Your reckless tax cuts caused real harm and real damage to people and programs in this city. But you do not have to double down. You can still be leaders of this city and move on from all of this. There is another choice, but will you be strong enough to make it? Stop sending our money out of state and lining the pockets with the already rich and give it to our city schools and our city programs. Thank you.
Next, we have Leno Haley, and I do hope I'm saying that right. Jennifer Wooster, followed by Beth White.
Good evening. My name is Leno Haley. I live in Ward One. I'm a retired Lynchburg City School teacher, a Big Orange Country pioneer, and I'm here to talk about a race to the bottom. Worldwide, education took a larger and more devastating hit during COVID than any other institution. I don't need to list the many COVID disruptions to traditional classroom education, but we are left with an entirely changed educational landscape. Skill deficits, chronic absenteeism, the struggle to staff buildings, all of these and more continue to plague school systems across the world, across the country, and across the Commonwealth. Indeed, while most adult individuals have recovered their normal lives post-COVID, public schools and the children that they serve are still in recovery mode. The question is, how do municipalities best craft a successful recovery for those schools and for those children? The Virginia Department of Education, along with many other entities, local and global, have taken data on what works, on best practices, if you will. And as Mr. Stump noted, those best practices have to do with money. Here's a sampling of best practices, adjusted for brevity. Best Practices supports maintaining alternative and flexible learning models, such as our own local empowerment academy and virtual academy. But here in Lynchburg, we are closing down ours. Best Practices suggests strengthening community continuity through maintaining neighborhood and magnet schools. That's also highly recommended. But we are closing two beloved schools. And as Phil Stump noted, surrounding cities are making different choices. They will have different outcomes. Best Practices encourages increased local funding for the services needed to help our children bridge the COVID year's gaps as the CARES funds disappear. But here in Lynchburg, our local school funding now lags back at two thousand fifteen rates, and the 2025 budget requires the elimination of a hundred and three actual LCS positions, as well as closing schools. That the state's outdated and unfair formula for funding education requires that localities pony up an increasing percentage of the monies for schools is undeniable. But the response of the five-in-majority on this city council effectively doubles down on the state's shortsighted miserliness at a time when our children, frankly, need some visionary magnanimity. They not only need it, they deserve it, from our citizens and from you. Instead of best practices in short, we have worse practices and a consequent race to the bottom. I've heard all the "we're so sorry, but we have no choice" from the folks who actually manufactured this crisis by voting in a five-two majority for the super, super-low tax rate that their donors demanded. Lynchburg also has choices. We have choices in the next city council election, with candidates running in all four wards to reverse the race to the bottom, engineered by the five-in-majority on this city council.
Next, we have Jennifer Wooster, followed by Beth White and Carly Schaefer.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Wooster, resident of Ward Two. I want to say first, thank you to the city employees who put together an amazing budget. I was not super enthusiastic when I opened that four-hundred-and-seventy-four-page PDF, but you made it as pleasant as it could possibly be, and that is no small feat. I have heard over the last years, Republican members of city council talk about the need to cut the fat out of our budget. I actually know something about this professionally. My first job out of grad school was working in the U.S. Senate. My job was to identify issues of fraud, waste, and abuse in the federal government so that we could be more responsible stewards of taxpayer money. So I was eager to open up our budget to see what type of fat you thought was appropriate to cut. And imagine what I found. Fewer capital projects, things like flooding and stormwater abatement projects, traffic improvements, needed fixes for safety, were not implemented last year because we did not have enough staff to manage the projects. The money was there, but we didn't have the staff. This budget suggests twenty fewer student service positions in our public schools, behavior coaches, reading specialists. We've heard people say, these are things that are needed the most for our kids. I'm shocked to think that you consider it fat to have seventeen percent fewer special education positions. You have closed or you're choosing to close the virtual academy. You are eliminating our only remaining community relations position at Lynchburg City Schools at a time when the rollout of school closures has been a disaster. You are suggesting forty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars less for teachers' materials and supplies. You know that will come out of their pockets for their kids. You are suggesting two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars less for transportation personnel when we can't hire enough bus drivers. I noticed that you are pulling a million dollars out of the LCS healthcare insurance reserve as an emergency stopgap measure to fill in the excessive price of medical insurance. That helps us this year, but what about next year and beyond? As a homeowner and a small business owner here in the city, I hope to live here in Lynchburg for decades to come, but I don't want to live in a city that puts off needed capital improvement projects because you cut taxes so low you cannot service the debt. And as a mom to three kids at LCS, I can't afford to revel in a property tax cut that puts a few dollars in my pocket now, but puts my children and our community's children's long-term interest behind those of your political donors. Do better. Thank you.
Next is Beth White, followed by Carly Schaefer, then Colleen Larkins, representing Sega Sandusky.
I'm going to do something I don't normally do. I am Dr. Beth White. I've earned that title. I've earned that degree. I live in Ward Three. You know, there's been a lot of talk over the last year, over the last two years, actually, of lower enrollment in Lynchburg City Schools. And what that means is that we need to give lower money to LCS. I actually took notes on the budget booklet, so thank you for my note paper. One of the things I looked at was the city of Harrisonburg, they have ten schools, Lynchburg has sixteen. They have six thousand six hundred fifty-eight students, much less than Lynchburg. They spend an average of eighteen thousand seventy-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents per child. That's higher than Lynchburg. Now, get into what I was actually planning on saying. I stood before you last year as you were trying to reduce the real estate tax rate. I explained that the reduced rate, while sounding good, would not be beneficial to most of Lynchburg, myself included. In fact, I remember during the budget bruise last year, that Mr. Bendah stated that to keep things status quo, we needed to keep the rate no lower than ninety-two cents per one hundred dollars. However, since the rate was cut to make the wealthy happy, which is not most of Lynchburg, we have seen proof of something that I was taught as a child, actions have consequences. Let's look, for example, at Lynchburg City Schools. As a graduate of public schools, I graduated from Russburg, so therefore, not a member of Lynchburg City Schools, and having earned my doctorate in education, education is near and dear to my heart. As a result of going below the recommended rate of city staff, city council has forced the staff to only give Lynchburg City Schools the same amount of funding the same amount of funding as last year for operations, $39 million. I think about that for a moment. Do you know anything that costs less than it did last year? I know I don't. One only needs to go to the gas pump to see that fact. Yet we are forced to give schools the same $39 million this year that we gave last year. Actions have consequences. As a result, two schools are likely going to close due to a lack of funding. Parents are upset. Children are upset, and nobody seems to have any answers. Folks are being used as pawns between the school board and city council. Instead of pointing fingers, there needs to be some willingness to compromise and find solutions. At the end of the day, it's not Republicans or Democrats who win or lose. It's the children, the future citizens of this city. It is the children. I'm sorry. I thought I had three minutes.
Next is Carly Schaefer, followed by Colleen Larkins, representing Save Sandusky, then Beth Schrock.
I'm Carly Schaefer, Ward 4, T.C. Miller parent and friend of Sandusky. Meeting after meeting, we've advocated to fund our schools and keep them open, not just for another year, but for good. One year ago, I spoke to you about the tax rate, and a year later, my three children are being uprooted into turmoil as their school closes due to funding. I know as city council, you've blamed school board and admin for their lack of planning, foresight and vision. I get that. School board blames city council, saying you hold the purse strings and need to fully fund education. I get that, too. Both city council and school board need to stop pointing fingers and instead work together to solve this. Thank you to Mayor Reed, Dr. Wilder, Ms. Dolan, Mr. Feraldi for actively listening to us. Members like Mr. Hegelson think that our schools are funded perfectly well. Nationwide and locally, this is laughable, sir. Buildings, bus drivers, supplies, stream programs, behavioral health, and most importantly, strong staff require adequate funding, and we don't even come close to our neighboring county's percentage of budget allotment. The Economic Policy Center states that good public schools improve economic development, real estate assessment, reduce dependency on public assistance programs, greater tax value crime reduction, and improved public health. Studies show that closing schools destabilizes communities, cripples small businesses, and weakens property values. Recent DC shutdowns led to $40 million of costs to demolish buildings, transport students, property value loss, et cetera. Struggling public school system mean higher costs and crime. Closing our schools is not the answer. When our schools thrive, our city thrives. There is nowhere for these students to go, no plan for them next year or the years after. Allocate the funds specifically to keep these thriving schools permanently open. You appointed this school board. Hold them accountable. TCM and Sandusky have excellent metrics in attendance, reading and math levels. TCM has one of our top five buildings, and Sandusky has an affordable plan to rebuild. Our incredible programs like performing arts and streams should be a model, not a sacrifice on the chopping block of poor budgeting priorities. These kids have already lived through the upheaval of a pandemic and do not need to be uprooted once again, this year or following years. Additionally, did you know that some of the city's more affluent PTOs operate at almost 13 times the budget of our inner-city schools? Your budget needs to reflect the inequities existent in all schools. RS Payne should have these programs. Paramount should have these programs. Lincoln should have a stream program. Schools with a higher percentage of black or brown students consistently receive less resources. You can fix this with Sandusky, T.C. Miller, and beyond. Fund education fully and equitably and keep our schools open. You want Lynchburg to thrive? Take care of the children who live here and let your budget reflect this. Thank you.
Next is Colleen Larkins, representing Save Sandusky, followed by Beth Schrock, and then Tiresha Royal, representing Sandusky PTO.
My name is Colleen Larkins. I live in Ward 4. Not that long ago, I stood in this very place, very frustrated, and begged you, for lack of a better term, to get involved in what was happening in the schools. I shared with you the frustration that many of these families feel of being ping-ponged back and forth with no solution at hand after six months of going to the school board and there no plan for our children. I want to thank those of you who have dug in, who have listened. Mayor Reed, thank you for what you said at the joint meeting. It meant the world. No one has apologized. Nobody has said they're sorry. And even though it wasn't your responsibility to do so, you did. Thank you to those of you who have come to our PTO meetings and listened to every last parent in the parking lot till 10:00 PM at night. Literally, Vice Mayor stood till 10:00 PM at night and talked to every single human who wanted to talk to him. Thank you for those of you who have dug in and heard us. We appreciate it. Ideally, none of us would be in this position. Unfortunately, here we are. The pressing need for $3.2 million to keep Sandusky and T.C. Miller open for one more year and hopefully beyond cannot be ignored. So the question is, is it worth $3.2 million? I thought about that the other day. I came to drop something off at school, and after I dropped it off, I kind of stood as all these kids are coming in from the buses, and I watched Mr. Womack hug these little tiny ones and then the fifth graders that are up to your shoulders. And I had a pang of sadness in my heart because my son will be leaving Sandusky after this year. He'll be going to sixth grade. And I thought of all the times I had watched that unfold and how I took it for granted. The excellence of Sandusky Elementary is worth saving. Those children are worth saving because the reality is, there is no plan for them. If you look at the numbers, they're very simple. Even if you max out every classroom in Paramount, Heritage and Sheffield, you leave 240 Sandusky children without a place to go to school next year. Will they go to modulars? I don't know. We don't have time to put those up, and where's the money going to come from? Are they going to go into libraries and gyms that are needed for their actual purpose? Will they be pushed to virtual Virginia with parents who can't afford to stay home with them? There's no answers to those questions. And although those aren't your questions to answer, unfortunately, here we are. We stand in the position of having to ask you for $3.2 million, a place we should never be and you should never be. So why save the schools? Why? Because if anyone deserves saving, it's these kids. They don't know what political party you're a part of, and frankly, they don't care. They don't know what your political views are. If you were to walk into a school, they'd probably tell you that they liked your jacket or your glasses, that your shoes were cool, they liked your pin, that you're tall. Kids are weirdly honest, right? But the end of the day, they don't care what your politics are. What they care about is having a stable place to go to school, a safe place where they are known by name, not just by their principal, which Mr. Womack knows them all by name. I don't know how, but he does, by their teachers, by their fellow students. I understand that right now LCS is failing at their mission to know every child by name and by need through graduation by forgetting these children. But Sandusky and T.C. Miller is not failing at their mission. So I ask you today, I plead with you, please find the $3.2 million so our children do not get forgotten.
Next is Beth Schrock, followed by Tiresha Royal, representing Sandusky PTO, followed by Kevin Larkins, representing Sandusky Student Council.
Hello. My name is Beth Schrock. I am a Lynchburg City resident in Ward 4. I'm also a parent. This is why I don't normally do this. Okay. I'm a parent of two LCS students and a former LCS teacher. I am here to ask you to reconsider your budget proposal and support education in our city. When I moved here almost 30 years ago, Lynchburg City Schools was known to be a school system with high ratings, and they were known all over the state as having standout programs for students that helped them grow, learn and thrive. I remember doing my student teaching in LCS schools and being amazed at how innovative and student-focused the teachers were. I was proud to tell people that I did my student teaching at LCS. I even came back to teach here. When I moved back to the area, I stopped teaching after I had my daughter, and I knew exactly where I wanted her to go to school. T.C. Miller. I loved the small school atmosphere that focused more on... Sorry. That was focused on more than the basics. My child would have an opportunity to enhance her learning through the arts, which is proven to help increase retention of material. If my daughter hadn't gotten into TCM, we were planning on having her to go to Sandusky. We were going to do a babysitter hardship because that's where my parents live. Now, due to poor decisions in years past and in recent years, along with Lynchburg City Council refusing to invest in our children above the bare minimum, both of these amazing schools are going to be closed. Back in 2019, the city gave LCS over $42 million. Now, even though the city revenue has increased by 16%, you're giving $3 million less than five years ago. The budget bracket challenge that you posted to see what people were more concerned with shows that Lynchburg City residents want excellent schools. As of 2:40 this afternoon, excellent schools has won a total of 405 times. That's more than three times as many as the one in second place, which is mental health and human services, and is almost double the amount of points as the second-place winner. Please listen to the people of Lynchburg. They are who you represent. Most of the people that you represent don't send their children to private schools or homeschool them. We send our children to public schools. Our city council should be advocating for our public schools. We want excellent schools. Give them the money that they need.
Next is Tiresha Royal, representing Sandusky PTO, followed by Kevin Larkins, representing Sandusky Student Council, followed by Nettie Webb, representing Save Our Schools.
Vice Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, and esteemed city council members, I am Tiresha Royal, the PTO president at Sandusky Elementary, speaking on behalf of our students, families and teachers. In the past five years, the students of Lynchburg City Schools have faced significant challenges, from navigating a pandemic to adapting to virtual and in-person learning environments. Our teachers have worked tirelessly to ensure quality education despite the obstacles of quarantine, social distancing and mask mandates. Just as our students were beginning to thrive again, we were confronted with sudden school closures and a lack of comprehensive plans for their educations. Families from Sandusky spent months advocating at school board meetings only to be directed back here to city council. We ask for leadership and action, and I want to thank those of you who have stepped up. Mayor Reed, your recognition of the issues facing our school was pivotal. Our children should not be pawns in a political game. Yet the foresight, yet the lack of foresight from some of our school board members left us scrambling for solutions. Now we face a stark reality. To keep Sandusky and T.C. Miller open, a budget increase of $3.2 million is required. Without this funding, 600 students will be forced into new schools next year, only to be redistricted again a year later. But worse than that, the closure of these schools will leave 240 kids without anywhere to go. How is that possible, you may ask? There's simply no room for them at our neighborhood schools. With the closure of Sandusky Elementary, students will be pushed to Paramount, Sheffield and Heritage. Those schools are already near capacity. And even if we maxed out every classroom in each of those schools, 240 students would be left without anywhere to go. The potential repercussions are dire: overcrowded classrooms, the possibility of forced virtual learning for those without parental support, and the loss of vital spaces like gyms and libraries. The school closures don't just affect Sandusky and T.C. Miller families, but Paramount, Heritage and Sheffield, who will now find their classrooms overcrowded. Also, this is not a problem you created. It is one we need your help fixing. We know it's no easy task, but our kids need you. We implore you to prioritize our children's education and well-being by increasing Lynchburg City Schools' budget. These students deserve stability and continuity in their education, especially after enduring so much upheaval. Let us not fail our most vulnerable citizens, our children. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Next is Kevin Larkins, representing Sandusky Student Council, followed by Nettie Webb, representing Save Our Schools, followed by Jordan Nesbit.
My name is Kevin, and I am the student council president at Sandusky Elementary. I am here tonight to ask you to find funding for Sandusky Elementary to stay open next year and for many years to come. I believe there has to be a way to keep a wonderful place like Sandusky open for many more kids to enjoy. Thank you for listening.
Next is Nettie Webb, representing Save Our Schools, followed by Jordan Nesbit, followed by Kimberly Dyck-Horsley.
Good evening. I am representing Save Our Schools as the director, and I'm from Ward 2. I want to first give a thank you to Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, Dr. Wilder, Ms. Dolan and Mr. Taylor for meeting with us, talking, having conversations, showing that you care about education, that you care about your constituents, and that you're willing to listen. I'm here to ask you to allocate the extra $3.2 million the school board has asked for. Public education is the foundation of a vibrant city. It attracts people, it develops a workforce, but it also costs money. Currently, though, the development of our education system is at a stalemate. As Mayor Reed said during the joint session, our students, parents and teachers have been put in the middle of a power struggle between city council and the school board. Our teachers' lives, our students' futures, and our parents' desires are not bargaining chips. We need action. We need a plan, and we need leadership, none of which we've gotten from the school board or the administration. And I know that as city council, you cannot make the plan, but you can fund public education in Lynchburg. You can show our children that their leaders care and will invest in them. The $3.2 million request must be funded because our city is in the middle of an education crisis. Not allocating the funds that the school board requested will be catastrophic. Here's why. Dr. Day and Member Trust have adamantly said that T.C. Miller and Sandusky will close at the end of the year if we do not get the funding. Now, what does this mean? No expansions completed, teachers laid off, and all trust in LCS gone. If the expansions are not made, elementary classes will be extremely overcrowded. Now, Member Hegelson has thrown out that maybe we should close four to six schools, that utilization should be as high as possible, that we should cut funding. He does not understand education, best practices, or anything that would make a thriving public education system. And why does he not understand? It is a choice. It's not incompetence. It's a lack of care. Here's what overcrowded classes will do. Literacy rates will decrease, high school graduation rates will decrease, experienced and qualified teachers will leave, and crime will increase. Most of you have all stated you're dedicated to increasing literacy rates. Closing schools will do the opposite. All of you have advocated for public safety. Closing schools will do the opposite. And all of you have said you respect and want to compensate public servants. Well, teachers are public servants. LCS teachers give their lives to the betterment of this city, though through educating and mentoring their students, they deserve the same respect as all other public servants. Vice Mayor Feraldi has posted on his Facebook about the increases in salaries for firefighters and police officers. Where is that same increase in compensation for teachers? That is how you attract exemplary teachers to Lynchburg City Schools, through compensating them how they deserve to be compensated. Our schools need the requested funding. In all honesty, they need more than that. But we, the community behind us, the community that has continuously showed up and advocated for our students and for our children in Lynchburg, we will hustle, we will continue to propose plans, we will continue to propose solutions, and we will continue to try to work with everyone to make sure we are not in this situation next year and that we have a better structure and foundation so we don't end up in this cycle of closing and lack of funding. If you give us the funding, though, we won't be silent. We will only get louder because our students and our children are worth fighting for. We will continue to call for accountability, continue to call for changes within the school board and administration because we want change. Our students are worth fighting for. Our teachers are worth fighting for, and our families who have dedicated their Our teachers are worth fighting for, and our families who have dedicated their lives now to this cause are worth fighting for. This community is calling on you to act, to be leaders, to make the city better, and look at your constituents. They are calling on you to make the right decision, to fund public education, to give our students a chance to succeed. You've ran on platforms that you would listen and make changes your constituencies want. Well, the community wants public education to be funded. It is your responsibility to listen to them. Thank you.
Next is Jordan Nesbit, followed by Kimberly Dyk-Harsley, followed by Nicole Sanders.
Hello, I am Jordan Nesbit. I'm in Ward Four. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, fellow council members, and staff. Thank you to this council for listening, validating our experiences, and coming alongside us to dig into all of the information for potential solutions to the budget issues we're facing at LCS. To this council, the city manager, and staff, thank you for hosting the Budget and Brew's events. It was extremely informative, and they did a wonderful job presenting the information and answering questions. Having those conversations with people in the decision-making seats has allowed me to feel like an active member in this city, as well as helping me understand decisions that I might not agree with but can see why it might have been a good one. One of the biggest takeaways from the little pamphlet that they had available that night were the priorities of this council and this city. Number one of those priorities being public safety. I think that's a great choice, and the improvements that have already been seen in the employment retention and recruitment truly are steps forward for a safer city that has a direct impact on the rest of our priorities. The second thing listed was infrastructure, and number three was lifelong learning, investing in people. I believe that those two can be worked on simultaneously, hopefully not in the two and three structures that were presented. We can delay some big projects and reallocate that funding into those lifelong learning, especially LCS. In the lifelong learning section, there was a bullet point to continue investing in LCS. It gave me a small sense of joy and relief when I saw that, but also immense hope that we can get to a place where that investment is growing instead of remaining level. I've got a couple of questions. Answers at any point greatly appreciated, or directing me to where I can find that If our public schools are public property, therefore owned by the city, is there a point where the city is not maintaining them well, not keeping up with maintenance, not taking care of those buildings, that if admin is not taking care of that stuff, does the city step in and take control of those things? Where does the city intervene to make sure that their property is being kept up well? And I've thought of lots of scenarios, and I recognize that that possibility is the funding for those things is included in what is already given to them. But we've seen that they're not maintaining it, so where does that intervention happen? And so with this $3.2 million that they're asking for, to have the runway that we need in order to keep these schools open another year, I can promise you that we are not going to stop now. We're going to continue to hold admin and the school board accountable. We're going to continue researching and looking for creative solutions, and we're going to put in more than our fair share of effort to start towards a better LCS going forward. Thank you.
Next is Kimberly Dyk-Harsley, followed by Nicole Sanders, followed by Carla Jones, representing TC Miller PTO.
Greetings. I'm Kimberly Dyk-Harsley, constituent, Representative, Dr. Wilder for Ward Two. I'm here as an individual. None of these thoughts are of a group, they are of me, is my disclaimer. First, I'd like to say I would encourage, strongly encourage, all of you to support the project titled Jefferson Park Phase Two on page 406. Random thoughts I've had. When I give people money to flip for me, or I invest money and I want to see a return, and they don't do what I ask because it's my money, then I take my money, or I hold it, or I don't invest again. Random thought. It seems that the timing of less funding for Lynchburg City Schools is when the demographics of the enrollment flipped. Melanated children are at a majority percentage now. It's the timing of less funding. Again, random thoughts. Population has increased, but student enrollment has decreased. I agree with Councilman Huggelson. I looked it up. Maybe it means more adults moved in, children got older and stayed, didn't have babies. So that means the funding is decreased? Well, the police chief said in March that the crime rate decreased, so does the police budget decrease also? Again, just random thoughts, nothing... What if everyone who paid real estate taxes didn't pay for the year? Took the penalty? Didn't pay the real estate tax? Didn't go out to eat for a considerable amount of time, like a unified blackout, if you will? Because the tax dollars is what the budget is made of, a lot of, right? Random thoughts. Oh, one more. As a melanated woman, I understand the nationwide effort to dismantle public education. I disagree with a lot of the lies that have been taught over the past, I won't give away my age, let's just say several decades. I disagree with the lies that have been taught. It needs to be rebuilt. Let's look at a way to rebuild, some kind of way. Thanks.
Next is Nicole Sanders, followed by Carla Jones, representing TC Miller PTO, then Betty
It's a new system up here. Makes me a little stressed. I'm Nicole Sanders. I'm in Ward Three. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here to speak on behalf of our city schools and voice concern about the level of funding proposed for the LCS budget. I don't think any of you disagree that our teachers and support staff at LCS are phenomenal, and I believe they need to be fully supported. I am a proud parent of an LCS graduate, and he was a beneficiary of a strong public school system. So he went to Sheffield, he went to the Go Center at RS Payne, he went to Dunbar, he went to EC Glass, he graduated from the Gov School. He participated in the Strings Program, and I'm so sorry that Mr. Reed left because Jeffrey also was part of the Forensics Team two years ago. So it was an amazing experience for him, and one of the reasons we stayed in Lynchburg was for these experiences for him. And it breaks my heart to think that the children currently in the system will not have the same opportunities that my son did. Strong public schools are the backbone of a community, and I urge you all to listen carefully to the citizens who have come out tonight. And in particular, you guys have seen my face 100 times before, you know who I am. I really urge you to think hard and listen to the people who are out here tonight who don't usually show up. This is intimidating. I've done it several times before, and it always makes me nervous. So I really want to urge you to pay attention to the folks who, you know, had to get babysitters tonight, who brought their kids with them, who sacrificed spending an evening at home with their children or with their family to come out here tonight to speak to you. And so I am offering up my time just to support them, to support the city schools, and just to remind you that we are all people who care deeply about Lynchburg and all of Lynchburg's children, and we all deserve to be heard. So thank you.
Next is Carla Jones, representing TC Miller PTO, followed by Betty Kane, then Jack Underwood.
Good evening. My name is Carla Jones, and I live in Ward Four. I am also the proud parent of a third and fourth grader at TC Miller. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to the council members that have met with us with open minds, listening ears, and as working with us to try and find the additional $3.2 million needed to keep our two elementary schools opened. But I don't want to leave out the extra just over a million that would also have a huge impact in keeping our Restore Academy open. If you take the time to listen to Dr. Derrick Brown, you will see the impact that that is also having in our school system. I also appreciate Mayor Reed acknowledging how the families have been put in the middle of this battle between the school board and between City Council. Let me be clear about two points. First, we recognize that our school board needs to create a viable plan, whether that's closing both schools, keeping both open, rebuilding a new Sandusky, making TC Miller a hybrid school. We need a plan. As a parent and part of the TC Miller PTO and Save Our Schools, I can promise you, we will continue to fight for and demand a viable plan if you can fund us for next year. But we need the runway, as Mr. Tross said. Which brings me to my second point. As City Council, you must fund public education, and you must be willing to acknowledge what Dr. Wilder said in the joint session. Urban school settings have urban city issues and challenges and need additional resources to address them. In a climate when prices are soaring and the needs of children are increasing, the city's education funding is decreasing. We can't rebuild any schools, much less maintain what we have and improve the services offered if you don't prioritize funding for our schools. If you don't find the funds, these two elementary schools will close, and they'll close a year earlier. And that's only going to create chaos. Chaos for every child at these schools because there is no plan in where they will go. But the effects don't just stop with the students at these two schools. You're looking at overcrowding every other elementary school in the city. The fact that we are guaranteed to overcrowd schools is not being openly discussed or acknowledged. Overcrowded classrooms lead to behavior issues, they lead to teacher burnout, they make struggling students fall further behind, test scores suffer, distractions increase, and there's less access to equipment and technology when you have overcrowded classrooms. This does not create an environment in which kids learn and thrive. But again, those are the issues that result just from overcrowding. What happens to the kids who may be rezoned multiple times? Who, what happens when they lose their safety net at their current school? Who get no closure if their schools suddenly close without much warning? I mean, at this point, there's six weeks left in the school year. By the time we know something, it will probably be less than a month. Think about that. No closure. The emotional and psychological impact on these children will be just as severe, if not more than the issues of overcrowding. And the effects don't stop there. If you don't increase your funding in future years, it's going to be detrimental to our entire school system. Families will leave, teachers will leave, and some already have. The effects of not having a strong education system in the city will impact our city as a whole. What do parents that are moving to the area look for first and foremost? The school system. What affects job opportunities and workforce placement? Education. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. Public education is clearly the top priority of the citizens of Lynchburg, according to that budget bracket challenge. That's because we understand when we have a solid, thriving education system, our city also thrives. I implore you to give the funds necessary, not just for next year, but also to increase your future funding of public education. These kids and our city are depending on you. Thank you.
Next is Betty Kane, followed by Jack Underwood.
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and members of council. Obviously, I'm not a parent of city schools, but I am a concerned citizen of the city of Lynchburg. Where I see us today is that we are at a crossroad in our city about our schools, and I see it as a Lynchburg city problem, not just a Lynchburg city school issue, because we are where we are today because of decisions we have made, including our citizens, some of the laws that we agreed to that you made from City Council, Lynchburg City, and could it be the lowering of the tax rate and the low percentage of the overall budget of the city? I understand that our budget for our city schools is about 17% in other counties, and other urban cities, it's much higher. Now is the time for us to focus on solution so our city school children will receive the best possible educational outcome. It's great to build new police facilities and amphitheaters. These are great amenities for our cities. Education is not an amenity, it is a necessity. Where I was raised, necessities became first. We address those first. I do realize that the number of students in Lynchburg City has decreased, but the need has increased. We are an urban city. We are facing the same dilemmas as all urban cities. We have crime, undereducated students, underemployment, violence, gun violence, city school violence, poor housing, homelessness, and other things. What is the one key to begin with to address these issues is education. Now is the time for us to address our school system by providing adequate funding. No one benefits from an undereducated society. I understand that when businesses and corporations and companies are looking to relocate, their first look is at the data from the city that they are planning to relocate to. So we want to have a good education system that we can do. Thank you. One of the mantras that I want to leave with you: Needs over numbers.
Madam Mayor, Jack Underwood is our final citizen signed up on our list.
My name is Jack Underwood. I live at 404 Precinct at Cedric. As you know, most Fortune 500 companies and growing companies are located in the liberal states with high property taxes: New York, California, Illinois, New Jersey, et cetera. However, let's focus on the one very conservative state that also has a high number of Fortune 500 and other businesses, and that's Texas. I lived in Plano, Texas for seven years before I moved here. Plano's a very conservative, right-wing Republican area. It supported Donald Trump in the last election, and our City Council members were very, very smart, conservative Republicans. But our property taxes were 2.3% to 2.4%, more than two and a half times the property taxes that we pay here. I asked these smart, I went to City Council, asked these smart, conservative Republican City Council members, why are Plano property taxes among the highest in the nation? And they turned to me, and they spelled it out. They explained, number one, higher property taxes are essential for the best schools, the best police, the best infrastructure, and the best services. Two, without good schools, good police, good infrastructure, and good services, people and businesses don't want to come to our town, our city. Three, when people and businesses don't want to move to our city, our property values fall. No one builds new housing, and everyone gets poorer. Therefore, our higher property taxes benefit everybody in Plano. Now, these are some good, smart conservatives that I'm sure other smart conservatives on this council would probably like to emulate because they've been so successful in Plano. Plano's schools are consistently in the top 1% to 2% of public schools in America. Plano's busting at the seams attracting businesses and great infrastructure in schools despite the fact that it has one of the highest property taxes in the nation. the fact that it has one of the highest property taxes in the nation. Now, some might mistakenly believe that Plano property taxes are high because Texas has no state income tax. Therefore, all local property taxes must be higher in Texas, correct? This is incorrect. I have here the property tax rates for every 253 locality, all the 253 localities in Texas, and as of last year, when our property tax rate was higher, 30% of these Texas cities and counties had lower tax rates than we did, despite the fact they got nothing from the state income tax. So state income tax is not relevant. It may have a small difference on individual taxes, but that wasn't even in Plano's mind. Believe me, you don't want to live in any of these low-tax states. So please, don't make us more like Plano, and don't make us Uvalde.
Madam Mayor, that was the last on our list.
Okay. Do we have any voicemails from citizens?
No, Madam Mayor, there are none.
Okay. Normally, we would adjourn here, but I have a statement I'd like to make. For the last well over a month, I know the Vice Mayor and I have spent a lot of time with our schoolspeople, families, teachers, spent time in the schools. Quite a few of council members I referenced tonight have met with you. Obviously, I addressed some of my concerns at the joint meeting the other week. A lot of decisions are being made, obviously, that are highly emotional, and I appreciate you coming tonight to share your concerns. I think due to the time-sensitive nature of what you're dealing with, my statement warrants itself. What we don't want to see happen are teachers taking other jobs because they're unsure about what's happening. Our city manager has let me know that five council members have come to him and requested that he find the money to help Sandusky and TC Miller stay open for one more year. So this morning, the Vice Mayor and I asked that he put that on the budget for next Tuesday's meeting to present options for us to find a way to help make that happen, so that tonight you guys can all, you and your families and your students, can know that at least for the next year, you have a home. And I thought you deserved to know that tonight. The public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget is now closed.
Anybody who is not on the list?
I'm sorry. Is there anyone else that did not speak? Let me... Back it up. Is there someone else that wants to speak before I regavel? Oh, there's a child! Oh, okay. Come on. Can you say your name? Okay, Eva. Where are you from? What school?
Sandusky.
Okay, go ahead.
Eva. Hi, everybody. Please help our school. I love the teachers there. I love Mr. Womack. I love the students. Please help our school. Bye-bye. Love you.
Anyone else that didn't get sent out? Go ahead. Please state your name and locality.
Hello, my name is April Watson, and I'm with Ward Four. I'll try to be brief. Thank you for having us all tonight. I am Lynchburg City Schools' parent with children at RS Payne, Dunbar, and Sheffield. I'm also a social worker. Late one night years ago, a sibling group entered foster care. The oldest child was devastated, not only because they had just lost the only family they'd ever known, but also because he had a field trip the next day. And that was one of his first opportunities to really leave this area and go and explore, and he was very excited about that. I got to cross my fingers and send a late-night text email, or excuse me, late-night email to Mr. Womack, hoping that he might read it before the following morning. Not only did I get an immediate response, but Mr. Womack reached out to that teacher, and they made arrangements to get that child on his field trip. That's just one story, one child. Imagine how many more of Lynchburg's children have benefited from that type of commitment from their educators over the years. All it takes is one connection to change a life. I've seen it over and over again, with the librarians that fund book fair purchases for kids that don't have money, from the teachers who stay late to tutor and become coaches and just cheerleaders in general. We should be pouring more money into our public education system, not less. Overcrowded classrooms will lead to increased behavior issues and less educational time. When children are placed in a private alternative educational setting, guess who pays for that? And it's a whole lot more expensive. Sorry, I'm going to try to skim through this. Lynchburg has a little less than 200 children in foster care, and they attend Lynchburg City Schools. So we are continuing to invest that money into our own kids and then in different multiple systems. Your public schools are an investment into our community. If you take away from our public schools, we will make up the difference elsewhere. It could be with crime, it could be with the child welfare system, or many other ways. But it will likely be much more costly than simply funding our public schools. Education is prevention. Prevention is public safety. Please properly fund our schools. Thank you for your announcement previously, but thank you.
Okay. We have one more? Two more?
My name's Sam Ford. I'm resident Ward Four, and just simply, I just want to implore y'all to fully fund public education because as a proud graduate of Lynchburg City Schools, I can tell you personally that the teachers and the experiences you have in public education encourage you to serve the public in the future, as I will soon do in August as a member of the Public Defender's Office. Thank you.
Looks like we might have a little citizen down here who would like to speak. Someone here? If you folks would like to form a line in the middle of the aisle, I think that might be best.
Hello, my name is Daniel. I'm from TC Mayor, and I would like to say, after four years, people have been passing COVID over and over in schools, and then they're shutting it down because of COVID.
So they're going to keep us open one more year. They're going to try to.
And I also want to say that schools should be, like, free. Like, people should make good decisions. No war in between, like, what school should be shut down because some schools are going to change someday. Like, let's take one, RS Payne. Good, and good, and needs a new statue. And so, basically, thank you for letting TC Mayor stay for one last year.
Thank you. And Daniel is a first grader at TC Miller, and we have loved having him there the last two years, and his sister is there as well. She's a fifth grader. What a wonderful school, what a wonderful program. They really do education through enrichment, through the arts. Best way to learn. He can tell you a lot of fractions and stuff, too, but we'll keep it on there. Thank you.
That's going to be a hard act to follow. I just, real quick, will say thank you for, you know, that's like good news about next year. I will say that I've been here in Lynchburg for a little bit over 20 years, and my oldest son will be turning 20 this summer. And he started off as a Perrymont Panther, because we live in the Perrymont neighborhood. And when he was a kindergartner, they were going to close Perrymont down. And so, 20 years ago, I was sitting in a school cafeteria fighting to keep Perrymont open, and thankfully, the city decided to keep Perrymont open. So he got to finish at Perrymont, which is also a wonderful school, and he went on to go to Dunbar, and he went on to go to Heritage High School, where he got his CNA license, and so he currently works at the Summit. And he's worked there for two years while he's also going to CBCC and doing college and looking to get into nursing school. And so, he is doing very well, and he is a product of Lynchburg City Schools, and I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of the fact that the city continued to keep that school open so that he would continue to have a good path forward. And my younger children, they went to Sandusky Elementary, and I work at Sandusky, and I know that it is also a really good school. And so, I encourage you guys to not just fund it for this year, but continue to encourage your school board to continue to keep those kind of schools open, all of our schools. We need them, our students need them, so that they can continue to be part of a viable workforce.
Rymon Grohasky, Diamond Hill. I demurred till everyone was finished because it's far more important than what I have to add. Mine is a separate situation. I'm currently researching film, potentially a series, that will be shot in Charlottesville and potentially our lovely little photogenic hamlet of Lynchburg. My doctor says I need to get out of the house more, so recently, I've been using the resources of the public library in this building. I came across a situation where they had a two-hour limit, and I asked them if they could increase it because there's nobody waiting. And they increased it to three hours. There needs to be a limit in case people are waiting, such as at Memorial. But downstairs, it's mainly tumbleweeds. Often, there's no one there. And today, I was in the middle of an important exchange, and I was told I had five minutes left on my three hours, and there was no one waiting. I was told I would be happy to sit in a chair and look at 10 empty-chair monitors, sucking up resources and electricity, but I had maxed out my time. Asked what the rationale was, and they said it's policy. Now, when I worked at a little country in Little Washington up in Rappahannock, we were rated number one by Zagat in service and won the National Service Award from James Beard, and the Michelin-starred chef's number one peeve was people saying it's policy. And he had a point, because the reason for it, the rationale behind it, is that people are waiting. But when there's no one there, the sheer bureaucratic officiousness, the glee that is taken, is ridiculous. The downstairs does not get enough traffic, largely because they close at 5:00. I was told by a librarian, hard to believe, "We like our cushy schedule. If you work a 9 to 5:00, you can't use this library branch." So I don't know how to appeal this. I've put in phone calls with no return, and it's unresponsive, and it's irrational. And if you need to cut the budget anywhere, you could probably close that branch because it's so little-used. But I think it would be important to keep it, but have it run more with an eye to air on the side of maximizing citizens' access to the resources. Even if they opened an hour later and stayed open till 6:00 or 6:30, that would make it more available. Thank you.
The public hearing is now adjourned. Oh, you have one more? Oh, sorry, Ms. Shirley. I'm sorry.
I didn't get on the line or anything, but as I sit here and I listen, and my name is...
Is there anyone else? This is last call. If you are not on that black line behind Pastor Shirley.
I know. I did not get on that black line.
Okay. Pastor Shirley, you're last.
All right. I just want to thank everybody for being here, number one, because you're here, the heart of the city. My name is Pastor Shirley. Guess I should have gave my name, and I'm in every ward of the city. I don't pick one, I pick them all. So I'm for the city. And I want to thank these parents. I want to thank these young people that came up and talked. I wish I had have been taking pictures. I said, "Man, I miss important pictures." But what I want to say, and let me watch this clock, because, you know, as a preacher, you get the mic and put it down, get the mic again. What can we do to increase the enrollment? If the enrollment is down, we need to check that out. Why? Yes, we're going to say it's COVID, the parents do not want to send the kids back. Why not? Why they don't want them to be in the schools? That's my concern. When I hear that school enrollment is down, and we're cutting budget because it's down, I can recall when I was in school, the schools were running over. And I guess as a child, maybe to these little people, it looked like that. But what is the problem with the public school that the school enrollment is down? And I don't want to hear COVID, because COVID is over. What can we do to get these kids back in school? And that's all I want to say.
Okay. Public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2025 budget is now closed. This meeting is adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on April 23, 2024, at 4:00 PM in Council Chamber.